Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Berlin Select Board meeting for what is it Monday, December 5th? It's December already. Let's see, meetings, I call the meeting to order. It is seven o'clock and meetings of the Berlin Select Board are generally recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Cable Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice, your image and your telephone number may be recorded. For those keeping track at home, it is Peg and I today. Chris is unable to make the meeting. I am thinking Peg, the discussion about in-person versus remote meetings really is a three of us conversation. I think almost the rest of this stuff agenda. I think we might still just try to do tonight and if we get to something, I think even we're talking budgets, Peg, if like you and I have diverging opinions on something or even if we think we can agree, I think that's where Chris can come in and be our our tiebreaker.
No worries.
Um, so we'll start with the approval of the minutes.
Yep. Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 28th, 2022.
I will second that and I think we're ready to vote and so Hawkins, I.
Stoneeye.
I was confused in the folder. I saw two sets of minutes and I started reading the December 5th ones first like, wait a minute, this is awfully blank and like.
Oh, I was being crafty. I was getting ready for tonight's meeting.
It was good. We kind of need if they were already done. We just passed the minutes for tonight. Um, Kristen, is there any correspondence?
We do have two pieces of correspondence. One is a thank you to Jersey Mikes for feeding the Fire and Police Department during the Toys and Toys for Tots Drive over at Cabela's and also a thank you to Cabela's for hosting the Toys for Tots Drive.
I can tell you that I was at Jersey Mike's. I went up Sunday before Christmas in Berlin. Holy crap. The place was packed. Had a chance to talk to the assistant manager as I waved my coupon and he said that quite a few people were coming up with them and as I was standing there, I could hear people behind me saying, did you bring your coupon? Cause if not, I've got another one. So I asked them if at some point once they tally, could they give us an amount between last Wednesday and yesterday to see how much the food pantry was going to pick up in donations?
Great.
Nice.
Do we need to sign those letters or is it just you or?
They're they're e-signed.
Okay.
Perfect.
Um, whoops. I lost my my agenda. If that's great for correspondence, then we have general public comments. If there's anyone in the audience would like to make a general quick comment, please raise your hand. Otherwise, I think we will, oh, perfect timing, chief. We can promote Chief Clark to the front of the room and he can give his November Fire Department report.
Ready to go?
We're we're ready to go.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. No, I just, I just sat down at the desk here, come out of training. So it's like, uh, we had a, let me find my notes here. As you can see, fairly busy month. Two in-town structure fires, a kitchen on Barnes Hill Road that the people did really good at were aggressive. And I like the reports I get from the people who have been around a while that prior to having people in the building, it would have been like a really heavy loss to that building. And the same with the fire on Pleasant Street and that early arrival, trained personnel, they're aggressive. They went in through some heavy smoke, hit that fire, knocked it down. We thought we had a little bit of extension to the attic, but it was minimal and things went really well. Mutual aid was very, very good at that fire. We had some engines from out of town in quick and a water supply established. So I was very happy with that. And hopefully that's my last fire I get to do. So it's like, uh, but I I I'm careful what I wish for. So but other than that, those two, you can see where the responses are. We had another good month for EMS billing and and credits. We'll take that anytime. That's in in good shape and the public end has kind of been quiet the last week and a half, two weeks. I'm trying to think of what else is going on. Working some Mima grants for some small amounts to have some equipment available for emergency management type incidents. So it's like things are going well. Apparatus is in good shape. We just had to replace a fuel tank and the associated strapping underneath six engine three. It was all rotted out and leaking, so we had to get a new one to keep it in service. It was gone like just about a week. But other than that, everything's moving well. Working through the beginning of the budget process with the TA and everything seems to be going really good. If anyone has any questions, I can feel them from you and see what's going on.
Go for it, Peg.
No fire marshal report there, Ken?
No, I think that he's been sick for two days. So I expected to see that he was working on it Friday. Then this morning, I think what he would have had it in, he went homesick, came in and did one inspection on Gates Pond Road. That was like one of those major ones that he couldn't miss and had it all out for a sick day. So as soon as that's available, I'll ship that off to to Mary and she can distribute that to the select board and the TA.
And I got to meet Luna on Friday. So
yeah.
Very cool dog. That's all I got. I'm questionless tonight. Look, it's blank.
I I I find that you must have switched the pages. I find that hard to believe.
Well, chief, you know, it's probably your last one with us. So I was giving you a break. I didn't want to do the Spanish in transition. You know?
Yeah, far away, all the time.
It's all good.
It's all very good.
I don't have any questions and we'll find and find another way, even if it's not a formal presentation to get you in just to say hi to us or bye to us before your last day.
Yeah, definitely. Definitely.
Okay, great. We'll let you, I think we'll let you get back to training then.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. See everybody. Thank you.
Uh, I think that will allow us then we can bring Victoria to the front of the glass. I mean, some sort of teacher, but I've never been a teacher, but it's just.
I think we have to guess before she opens up her presentation, how many slides? I say 10.
Okay.
Everybody.
Hey.
Hey, Victoria.
So Peg, what was your bet?
How many slides?
10 Scott, what's your bet?
Oh, I think it's more than that.
Chris, you have it?
Seven.
Mary?
Oh, gosh. I'm gonna go like one.
All right.
It's like you gotta do prices right. You gotta go down to zero or one.
I gotcha. Okay. Well, I'm going to disappoint a lot of you tonight. So all right, let's let's do this.
Not sure how to take that. So there's either 20 or there's three.
No, there's five.
Do I win? I was closest.
We're close. Yes, you win.
Yeah. All right. So here we go. Can you guys see this? Okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So this is just what's going on for social services. And I did this for the just the rest of the calendar year, for the last of the fiscal year, I mean. So just events for fiscal year 23 ongoing is we are planning teen stress management webinar. This is going to be on Wednesday, January 25th at 6:00 PM. What we're doing is I got in contact with a local agency that has been doing some work with DPH about just trying to especially work with teens and youth and since I'm now the social services side of the director position, I want to make sure that we start focusing more on the youth of town because I don't think that we've really ever had the ability to do so previously. So we tried to do this webinar a couple of months ago and we didn't have any responders, but the good news is now is that because we've picked the date already, the thought is that we're just going to blast it out and we're going to open it up to it won't just purely be Berlin. Obviously Berliners will be allowed to attend, but if there's other school, you know, if there's other kids from other, you know, districts, like, you know, for example, like if a kid from Boylston wanted to attend or something like that, we're obviously going to let them. In conjunction with that, I'm looking at doing a basically through the same agency, a parent depression awareness training as well as an adjustment management for teens as well before the end of the fiscal year. So what we're thinking is probably like the parent like depression, like info session and probably early March. And then probably the adjustment management come like late April, early May. So to help people kind of get eased into ending the school year. So that's tentatively what is planned for that as of right now. As of now, these are all virtual events. We, they can become in-person live events, but I figured for right now, especially with winter time and all the fun diseases going around, let's just keep it virtual for now and we'll see how it goes. Narinon groups are still ongoing. The town is not is not involved with this formally in any way, shape or form. We're just the messengers that the group is still going. They are meeting at the Hilton down by Solomon Pond Mall in Berlin every Tuesday night at six o'clock. It's a good hour, you know, and it's a support for anybody who has a loved one who is either currently or who has in the past had any substance abuse issues. It's very much like Alanon, if you've ever heard of that. And the presenter wanted me to remind everybody that sometimes if you were to Google and you were to flub the Google, it may come up as Narcanon and that is for Scientology and that is not what this is. So in case anybody ever did Google it and see Narcanon, it is not that. This is purely just a peer support group for those who are, you may have a loved one that is either currently or previously had a substance use issue. And then I'm also working with Public Safety and the council. We were approached by a a doctor's office in Lemonster to do a training on fall prevention. They've been working with a lot of the other local senior centers and they've been able to do their presentations. So I'm just waiting for a call back. We're going to get a list of dates and figure it out. So I talked to Chief Clark because I figured it'd be good with tying into public safety. And he was for it. So we're probably going to use the training room and we're going to do a hybrid model for that as well, where we can have people come in person and in in the virtual way as well to just get that information. So that's what I have planned currently, but you know, this could change. So something that I want to bring up to people is that we're getting into winter and this can be a very difficult time of year for a lot of people just to begin with. But especially because of inflation and where we're at, there are, there are resources out there in case anybody is in need. Fuel assistance is a big one. Mock and Fitchburg handles the Berlin cases that may be needed. They, for the first time ever, they are allowing people who are new applicants to apply online. It is through a portal that is linked on Mock's website. What you would need to do is you would need to provide information about your household, such as the residents, children and adults, verification of identity, any income source that you're going to have. And you would just need again, just proof of identity and that you have, you know, you have a dwelling. You do not need to be a homeowner to apply for field assistance. You could hypothetically live in an apartment or a condo and still apply. What they do is when as part of the application is that you are going to be providing them information regarding your utilities. So whether it is gas, oil, wood, electric, whatever it is, you would be providing that information to mock. They will be uploading your application online to the state portal. When it's verified, you then get notified that you have been approved. What they tend to do is when you get approved, you'll get formal notification and then they'll tell you the dollar amounts. And what this is, is it's direct payment to your utility supplier. It is not a check to you. So if, for example, you know, you had oil, I've seen a lot of people who may have oil and electric, it tends to go towards usually one or the other. You know, and then for, for example, if you had oil, what they would do is they would tell you it's a fixed amount. You could decide to use it as like a one-time payment to hypothetically say fill your tank or you could use it over several months to then kind of ease your bill. So you're not necessarily feeling the pitch every month. It is all, as of right now, I would say out of all the public benefits out there, I think fuel assistance is probably the one that most people like actually have a shot of qualifying for. Cause even if you're working, you still may have the ability to qualify. As of right now, I believe for an household income of two people, I believe that the cutoff is about $50,000 a year in terms of, in terms of income coming in. And again, you know, for a retired couple, that would happen, but also too, unfortunately, there are some families out there that, you know, could qualify for it as well. Mock has the breakdown income wise on their website. And if anybody has any questions, just call me. I can work with you to try to gather the information that you're going to need. For those who have had the service in the past, every October, Mock basically sends out a recertification application to the residents. You verify everything that's on there. You send proof of every, you send proof of your, any income that's coming in and then you submit that in and then you just automatically get the service back. So for those who are thinking about applying, it, it will be a much easier process once you've already been accepted. But I just want people to know that this might be an option for, for families and for, you know, our Berliners. And again, you know, if you had any questions about it, if you wanted me to take a look at, you know, making sure that you have the correct paperwork and documentation, or if you just have questions in general about doing it, please feel free to email me or give me a call. We've, I've already been, I've already talked to a couple of residents as it is. I suspect that as we get into the new year, it's, it's just going to continue to be honest. And to let people know as well that even if say, for example, it takes you to February or March to apply, please apply because you can still qualify and get your benefits. And in some cases, what they'll do is they'll let you prepay for the next year, depending on when you get benefit approval. So I would say, you know, like if you're in question, it does not hurt to apply. You can reapply again later if you, for any reason, got denied or if circumstances changed. So I just want to put that out there for people.
This might be something that might be something good to get on like the Berlin Town page.
And I'll we had it right up on Powderhouse and what I can do is I can copy and paste it for Berlin neighbors. That's not a problem, just so that they, people can kind of see. Again, and like I said, I, I suspect that as we really hit winter, people are going to want to start applying more. Um, other food, other resources that we have available is for fuel, for food assistance. You know, there is the SNAP benefits, so kind of known as food stamps, you know, more non-classy way, I guess, of saying it. There is the Berlin food pantry. There is wheat. There are other pantries and other places around. If you are in need, please call me. We can, I can get you a list of other places that you can use. If, for example, you know, you were trying to, you know, go to wheat to pick up some groceries or something like that during the week, call the, call the council. The van would be able to then take you to these appointments. As long as it's during the week, this is a necessity run. We will do what we can to prioritize that for people. Housing, you know, there are the Northbrook applications as well as section eight housing. I've distributed out quite a few of both of these and like I said, these, these applications are very dense and they can be very daunting and they ask for a lot of information. So if, if you guys, if anybody out there needs this information or if anybody has any questions, please just ask. We're the willing to work with you on that. Any health insurance questions? We still technically are in open enrollment and I think open enrollment actually is ending this week. But if you have any general questions, I would say, let me know. We'll get you in touch with a shy and counselor and we can get, you know, people, the information that they will need that way. And for anybody who is coming up on a basically like a life-changing event that even though they may not necessarily, you know, get Medicare come, you know, January 1st, if you have a life qualifying event there, you know, you can even work with a shine counselor or even try to pick my brain about like how to best make sure that everything is set up. So like if, for example, you're turning 65 or if you are married and your spouse is going to be retiring and getting these benefits, or if you have a change of status, something like that, you know, these are things that as well that, you know, we can help get you the information that's needed. And then any mental health questions, whether it's, you know, just general information, or if you're looking for resources such as therapy or even like medication providers, just give me a call. You know, as I said, we're in winter time and, you know, for some people, this is the most wonderful time of year. And I would say for every one of those people, there are others who think that this is the worst time of year. And it can be really hard dealing with the stress of families, or if you do not have as many loved ones as you may have previously had, like I said, it, this can be a very extremely stressful time of year for people, you know, this on a setting at 420, it, it's a lot. So you know, if there's anybody out there who may be in need, please just cut my way and I'll do what I can to help you get what you need. So that's it in terms of resources. And then finally, I wanted to talk about the UMass Community Needs Assessment. I've been in touch with Dr. Coyle. She's the, one of the head researchers for the project. What they are doing is that UMass is currently working on an IRB. It's basically when they have a proposal for a project like Berlin's, their proposal has to go through the IRB or the Institutional Review Board, basically saying that the work that they're going to do is ethical. And that like, there's no like, you know, that the benefits are going to outweigh any risks and that there's, you know, informed consent, all of that stuff. So I believe that they're just waiting for IRB approval on their end. Because of that, they were saying that surveys are now most likely going to go out in February as opposed to January, which is fine. What they are still planning on doing is that before the survey goes live, postcards are going to be mailed out to all residents, 18 and older. And for those who are over 60, they will be mailed a hard copy of the survey. For those 18 to 59, there will be a QR code, a website which will link, you know, on everything. Once we get it. And there will be also be a telephone number where if people wanted to call in their answers directly, we can do that. Um, come January, the thought is that before the end of January, the questions will be finalized. I suspect that once I know from Dr. Coyle, when they've got their template and they've got their approval, I'm sure that we'll all be needing to discuss the questions and things like that. And then as of right now, they are still planning for the survey to be completed and the formal presentation for the town to be by the end of May. And that's all I had. So I will take any questions. Hi.
So Victoria, I saw online that the food pantry now is only going to be open one day a week due to lack of volunteers on Tuesday. So I don't know if that changes anything that you have where now it'll be everybody or, and whatever they do just on Saturday.
If for any reason somebody did need transportation to the food pantry, if we had enough notice, I just have to give my drivers enough notice. So I would say, I can't say it's a definite, but I think what we could do is if I've given enough time, I can reach out to my drivers and see if they would be willing to do that.
And then you mentioned the presentation in May, and I know this is a little bit forward thinking, but Kristen, I know that we try to have coffee talks every quarter. So if we have one in January, February, March, April, maybe we spread it out until late May, early June, so that we can get Victoria in. So if you want to.
April 1 normally is a town meeting presentation.
All right. So, all right. So we will skip April. So then maybe do like a last a summer one, just so that people have it.
Yeah. And I mean, if there needed to be like even like an, like an extra like meeting or something like that, we could plan it out. I mean, I have no problems with that. You know, and I mean, if, if you wanted to as well, I'm not imposing this obviously, but like if you guys wanted me to come to the January 19th coffee talk, I can certainly, you know, if people have any questions, I can certainly do my best to answer them.
Sign her up. That was like an invite. Sign her up.
Okay, so.
And then I did put on a, I picked a, I think the first, the last meeting in May, a note in our agenda to sort of, if we've not heard anything to call back, so we don't forget about it either.
Sounds good.
Guys, because they, Victoria, what is, we've been doing this sort of US full-time with halftime as social services is what I, I, I want to say we've been in for years, but I know it can't possibly be that long. But so what is the, the, the volume?
That's a good question. So I've had the split role now for a little bit over a year. And I think I've had numerous people who have come down to see me and they were like, oh, thank God you're here 40 hours. And even though I think it's just the fact that like I may not be constantly needed and as you're like with Berliners, like if they think you're needed, like it's, it, you know, I'm happy with it. I do know that we've, it definitely comes in peaks and flows with need. I think, you know, especially now, once we're getting more into the, you know, the new year, I do think that the resources and the public benefits and, you know, questions like that are going to come up. I mean, there are some days where it's definitely busier than others. I would say, you know, as a whole, it's, it's hard too, because there's more that I would love to do with both council and aging and social services, but because I'm a human doing both, I'm just, I'm limited because I, I don't want to overextend myself either. And I do think that now people know that I'm here more and more. I do tend to get more like, I, I, I do notice now that I'm tending to get more of the, not purely just like, hey, I'm somebody calling for like a senior ride or something like that. I'm I'm now starting to get more of like the interesting questions. I get a fair bit of call from family members who were concerned about loved ones in town and they may not even be Berliners, but it's like, you know, hey, like I don't know what's around. What can you tell me? And, you know, again, I'm more than happy to have those calls. I mean, I've had people who I've told them, I said, listen, you know, if you're interested in public benefits, call me, we'll schedule a time. I'll sit down with you. I'll do it all with you. And I think for those people, you know, again, is it, is it constant all of my day? No, but I think just the fact you're knowing like, hey, like even if I have a question, I can call you or I can email you is has been really beneficial. So I mean, I, like I said, I think, you know, I do think as a whole, this is picking up and you know, again, I, I am needed for certain populations of the town and I'm happy about it. And for those who at this point, you know, are completely self-sufficient and may not need my help. I'm, you know, I've, I've heard from those families as well. They're like, well, we're happy you're here when we need you. So fair enough. So.
Ever talked, the trustee of trust, we have a bunch of little tiny funds in town, the town does, some of which are for town benefits. I know that a resident who I worked with actually through my mother and her church, just because they happen to be a Berlin resident. They were able to get some, some smaller funds for something and that if you've not have been aware of that or talked to Barry about some of those would be something to do.
Yeah. I mean, we're going to get our formula grant in probably sometime in like January, February, and that will help us too. I mean, you know, we're looking at doing, the council's looking at doing another grab and go at the beginning of the year. So and we love doing it, but it just, it kills our budget every time. So I mean, it is what it is. And like I said, we're not going to, you know, the council knows, I mean, we have a tight budget. The council knows that we're going into the donation funds, probably this year and probably next year. And, you know, I've told them like, we're still doing what we're doing, but just be mindful. And, you know, like I said, the need's there and we want to do what is best going to help Berlin. So if these grab and go meals are just a little like pick me up that you need to like something to look forward to, then so be it. You know, if it's me helping you fill out a SNAP application, then so be it. At this point, we're just, you know, I, I appreciate the feedback and I'm very much looking forward to the survey because, oh my God, I would love the, I'm loving the feedback. I, I can't wait to have it. Just so we know, you know, what direction we're heading in, you know, what tweaks need to be made, things like that. So I, I'm very curious to see it.
And then lastly, we, we put in the budget a couple of years ago, some extra money for helping Berliners in need. That we never were able to come up with a process plan or a way to use those funds. Not that I'm asking you to do that, but just probably know that there, there is, I thought we put, we, we had last year put 3,000 in that I don't think we've touched at all. Okay. And, and when I asked for it to be done and, and I get in a, you know, government needs everything regulated and documented way, but thinking that, you know, there are a bunch of people where $50 here or $75 there or paying off this one small bill makes a big stress reliever in life. And the idea that we could have sort of, they had less sort of overhead than you, than you see in fuel assistance and other stuff. But and could help Berliners would be, would be something really neat. And so if you ever thought of something and I think there, there's definitely obviously limitation what we can do because these are still textiles. We can't just randomly write checks to people because we feel like we like them. We have to make sure we're doing their need and they're not going to like our friends, but not people we don't care much for or something like that. Yeah. But just know that. But just know that's there and I, I, and at some point, we might talk more about how to, to do that.
Absolutely, I mean.
I can see June going into palpitations right now. No, Scott, enough checks for everybody.
Hi, June, no. So at this point, I mean, I will definitely, I'll put my thinking cap on. Um I even had um somebody call me last week asking about, you know, like they wanted to make a donation as well and just seeing like. Where would it best be going to? And at this point, it's hard because like. There, there's cer- certain things that I can think of, but I'd also don't want to, you know, again, for, you know, residence privacy, I also don't want to be like, oh, hey, like, you know, call, you know. Call Scott Hawkins, because I think, you know, which I. Something else.
Anecdotal stories and all the things we're working on, but we're a small enough town that if you, you know, said, well, I had this seventy-five-year-old woman who recently fell and like. There'll be fifty people in town go, oh, I know exactly who that was, you know.
Oh, you mean the one with all the cop cars? Yeah, and yeah, exactly. Something else too that I've had a couple of conversations about with people that. This is not a problem that we can fix, but I think, you know, just something to kind of be on your side of it as well is. We've had a couple of calls from um families and seniors in particular about like when they call nine-one-one. And then the concerns about the ambulance bills afterwards. And again, it's nothing like this is, and I've explained to them, you know, like, hey, listen, like, there may be a way. You know, if it really is a hardship, please let us know, we can let the select board know, you know, things of that nature, but. It's, it's hard, you know, because again, like, you know, I am not a medical professional, I am always going to tell them that nine-one-one needs to be called. I will, you know, initiate a wellness check if I absolutely had to, just to ensure someone's safety and. I, and again, like I, and I can totally understand why someone is scared. That, you know, like then they're going to, you know, have this, you know, incident happen and then they're going to get settled with a bill. But I, I, I try to reiterate as well, like, listen, like, a bill can always be sorted if your safety can't. And I think, you know, again, just. That is something that has come up and I can't. Like I said, I don't want to divulge, but you know, that is a topic that I know has come up a few times, so just to keep that also on your radars.
Victoria, there's um, it may be something that we need to revisit. It kind of kicked around June of uh years ago when I first came on the board about a. Ambulance services collection policy and fee waiver form, I'm looking at it now. On the Town of Berlin uh website, it's twenty nineteen, so I don't know. If we.
Yeah, and I've, and I've told that to a couple of people as well, that like, listen, like, if it really is. And to that point, I said, please, you know, let me know, we can try to work to see if you would qualify for this, so. But like I said, like this was like the one topic where I'm like, oh, yeah, like this is, and again, like, there's no good answer. Um and unfortunately, that's social services, is there's really no good answer to all these problems because they're big problems and. Sometimes, you know, unfortunately, you need a big solution and that's out of pure Berlin hands, but. We're going to do what we can to make the solutions that we can, you know, happen.
Scott, maybe on a um, a future agenda, you know, in between budget fund. That we pull up that policy and, you know, the four of us will bring in June, because I know that obviously as. Town accountant gal uh that we're going to need her input, so maybe we just start looking at it and. Seeing how up to date it is, and then at least Victoria, you know, you'll have something maybe a little bit more uh current to try and help folks in town.
Sounds good.
Add it to a future agenda, just as a placeholder.
So yeah, if uh if anybody has any questions, you know where to find me. I have two offices now, so if I'm not down in the Council on Aging Room, I'm in public safety, it's fine, I'm right next to Abby, so. I'm approachable one way or the other.
Which we appreciate.
Awesome, we appreciate you, Victoria, we're still very lucky to have you and hope to have you for many, 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 many years until I hit retirement age and then I can bug you, so.
Well, regardless, you can bug me, so. Or not, like you could totally bug me, so don't worry about it.
Alright, be careful what you wish for, as you said, just saying.
All good, thank you, guys.
So I need to hear all the fun things we're doing in town. Town administrator report, I think, is next. How are you going to follow that up, Kristen?
I, I can't, I'm not going to try. I'm just going to do my thing, uh which would help if I didn't close out of it, sorry, hold on one second. Just had it open. Okay, so last week was an interesting week. Budgets continue, of course, um that was department heads throughout the week who had budget questions. Budgets have been submitted to accounting where they'll be reviewed for corrections and forwarded on to me. The Personnel Committee will be meeting this week to discuss market and merit increase at market rate slash merit increases. And as you have heard before, the FinCom budget meetings begin next week, December fourteenth. Um we have two uh recruitments going on, one for fire chief and one for treasure collector. I met with MRI to discuss the fire chief recruitment process. We received eight applicants and they conducted preliminary screening and forwarded on four candidates for review. Um MRI and I will meet with each candidate individually on December fourteenth via Zoom. Uh two candidates will be selected to move on to what we're referring to as a mini assessment center to look at skills. Um and one final candidate will be chosen to interview before the select board. We are hoping to finalize the process in early January. Which means, and I have spoken to Chief Clark, we will have to extend his contract by a bit. Um I was thinking, just so we don't have to do it more than once, hopefully it won't go this long, but through the end of January. And I will have a contract amendment prepared for you for your next meeting on the twelfth. And treasure collector interviews are starting tomorrow. We have three qualified candidates. And I continue to get a few in here and there, um so we will see how tomorrow goes. And uh if we don't feel that we have what we need. We'll have to either wait a little while, I mean, we have some time, or, you know, look at other options, but. The three candidates that we do have, two. Ha- are currently treasure collectors. And one has been an assistant treasure collector for five years. So that's pretty solid experience. Um and, and the, the latter is an assistant treasure collector in a larger community. So that's a decent amount of experience. The other big thing that happened last week was working on the Personnel Policy Manual. Personnel Committee has been asking me to kind of pick up where Margaret had left off on. Putting together a pro- policy manual for personnel. And it was kind of in a lot of different pieces, so I pulled everything together into one document. And last Wednesday went through it with Personnel. We were able to get through and re- review and deem complete everything but three policies. So I'm working on finalizing those three. And they'll go back to Personnel for review, and then my goal is to bring it to the Select Board for final review and approval in early twenty-three. Sounds scary, we can already talk about twenty-three, but that's actually not that far away. I did meet with the Neshoba Valley Regional Dispatch Administration Board, which consists of town administrators from all of the participating towns. Provided with us with a budget update, everything seems on track, and it is time to do the Executive Director's Performance Evaluation. And on Friday, I went on a very informative tour of town with Tim Wheeler. I was incredibly impressed, he knows every parcel almost in town. Who owns it, what its use has been, what its use could be. Um and it was extremely valuable, and I think it was best that I waited a few months. Because I now had context in order to understand what it meant when we went by all those properties. And we talked a lot about land use options and planning, and it, it was just a great conversation and I learned a lot. Um and then I am working finally on a new agreement for copier and lease services along with printer support for the town. We actually have our current vendor Conway, I have just gotten a price back from them. It's actually looks like it's going to be, believe it or not, slightly cheaper. Than last year, or the last contract rather. Because um we are going to do the two main copy machines. And um we're going to use the hallway copy machines and the police copy machines. Um the small copier that was in the Board Committee Room seemed a bit redundant to have. So we're going to ask them to use the copier in the hallway. And um that copier though was kind of a small like printer copier scanner. The town clerk's office was desperately in need of an updated printer, she was having trouble with marriage, like printing marriage licenses, death licenses. Uh death permits, uh sorry. Yeah, death, what's the word, certificate, sorry. And um so we talked to Conway about it, and because we had had it for three years, they actually had a buyout option at a slow price for that piece of equipment. So we want to move forward with that. And um we did do three quotes, but the problem is the other vendors don't provide support for the printers, they only supr- provide support for their copiers. So Conway can do it all, and I think it makes sense to stay with them. And I believe that is it for me. But Peg has a list of questions.
No, you know what, I decided this week that I would kind of sort of be questionless, so um. This, you know, here's your one mulligan, it's at the end of the year, but here's your one mulligan, Kristen, so, no, I'm just looking. I do have something, but it can wait until later.
Um the purchases, like uh the, I think we have all the radios now at this point for, for police and fire and we. You've put in the one for the antennas on the antennas, the repeaters is the next stage, right? Are we making progress on that?
It is, we have not yet, so that part is tricky, we have to put together an RFP that is well over. The bidding threshold of fifty thousand dollars. So that one's going to take a little bit of time because it involves, um I guess the filter component of it is quite expensive. And as we learned as part of the antenna process. You get five different ways of doing things when you ask five different vendors to quote. So the way we came up with and speaking with the Executive Director at Neshoba Valley was to work on putting out an RFP that basically says, here's what we have. Come out, look at our system and you recommend what you think we should do. Um it's a matter of kind of basically getting a, you know, a calculation of the existing system and putting that together. Once budget season is done, I have a long list of procurements, including cable. Cameras, heavy material bids, roof bids, recreation courts, it's a. And it's growing, but uh it's on there, so we will get to it as soon as we can. The antennas fix the immediate safety need of the spotty. Um and going down communication, but it is still on the list.
So let's then move on to old business, which is the fiscal twenty-four budget. Development, now that is, I think, both for select board, but how are you doing on getting department, outside of the select board being late, what other budgets are not in?
So I don't have that list yet, June was on vacation for two weeks, she just came back this morning, Amy has started reviewing them. And I will be getting a list shortly, what she's done is she's kicked back some that had issues. And she's going to present me with complete ones, but I will get a list of late ones.
So, so you're, what you're saying is if we finish ours tonight, you could slip in the middle of the pile, we could pretend that it's been there for last week?
Absolutely. I'm saying I'm not going to late shame anyone this year because I, I would be hypocritical to do so.
What's ours are in, then we can get better at that.
There, well, yeah, yeah, you, you, you get a pass, and, and you know, I apologize for the confusion on that too. Um what I did was I put in the shared drive, not only the select board budget, but just in case you were curious. I put in the town administrator budgets that were submitted, just in case you wanted kind of a more comprehensive look of everything that this office. Uh jointly oversees, because I have asked Mary to help me manage several of those cost centers. Um that you see in the town administrators budget list as well. But in terms of the select board budget, I would like to turn it over to Mary to kind of walk you guys through that, she's got that institutional knowledge. So I asked her to do some research and put that together, so she is ready to speak with you.
Hi, everybody. Summary budget form. I'm just going to share my screen. Can y'all see this?
Yes.
Okay, this is straightforward, this is the elected salaries, and that went up by two point five percent divisible by three. Is that visible for everybody?
Yes.
Okay. The next one is full-time wages, um which looks like a two point one percent, but it's, it is really two point five, I just had to um. Do the math, that last year we had an extra eight hours in the budget, so. But this rate right here does take into account. The two and a half percent cola in the grid. Okay, consulting services is always an unknown. Um we did have an overage last year and we needed a reserve on transfer of eleven thousand five hundred. But that was because of the unexpected need for um a TA executive recruitment. Um taking that out, it's largely otherwise Weston, Sampson and. Beacon Integrated Solutions on Energy Consulting, which largely last year included the POTUS. Appellate Tax Board needs for um us using a consultant to help guide assessors through that. Otherwise, since it's just a guessing game, we went up the two point five percent there. Is everything good so far?
Yep.
Okay, trash disposal downtown was unfortunately under budgeted because at the beginning of this fiscal year, it really went up to three twenty. So we're bringing that up to the real today rate, so that exceeds two point five percent. Uh we don't have a contract with Hudson Disposal, but um that's now seventy-eight dollars a quarter. Hearings, notices and advertisements, we're just going up two and a half percent. That takes into account um tax classification or any kind of advertising that the select board needs to. Do, and some, now that the Clinton item's back, that tends to be slightly lower than the Telegram and Gazette. So that's going up ten dollars to two and a half percent. Bulk mail permit number three. Yeah, was by mistake inadvertently low this year, we don't know that when the budget was set because the US Postal Service sends out their statement as to what. It's going to cost us for bulk mail permit number three in March, by then the budget was already set. So it was unintentionally under budgeted and it uh should have been um higher at eighty-eight dollars. Putting up eighty-eight times um. Two point five percent brings us to ninety-one dollars, which is eleven dollars increase, fourteen dollars for the coming year. Okay, but we don't really know what the actual fiscal year twenty-four's are, so that'll be up possibly more dollars. Postage was a big hit, and the reason for this is uh we budgeted for four hundred and fifty dollars for the year, but we did not take into account. The fact that. Stop me if you already understand the story. The Town Report last year was the first time that the book was not mailed townwide, and the Town Report used to include postage for the Town Report everywhere. But instead, the Town Report was dropped down because we were not going to be mailing it. But then the other cost of what actually still remains in the new bylaw that must be mailed to all po- uh households is the. Annual Town Meeting Warrant and the Finance Committee's budget. So that needed to be picked up somewhere, we, we took down the rest of the um ATR one ninety-five cost center. And still had to go into the select boards and wipe out the rest of their expenses prematurely last year. So this is trying to capture the real cost of postage. And taking into account that the postal service is going up on rates as of uh January twenty-second to sixty-three cents of forever stamp. We're expecting that other things that are covered by this line item, like not just the bulk mail that we send out, but also return receipt requested when we have to send certified mail. We're expecting it all to go up um eight in some change percent across the board. So it looks ugly at a hundred ninety-nine percent increase, because it is, but it, it is largely. That unaccounted for change in the bylaw, which by the way, the town could further change the bylaw and get rid of the need to mail the annual town meeting. Report and FinCom report to every household, in my town, for example, there's a postcard that goes out to all households. Without all the other pages and it directs people to a website, and that's increasingly being done in other communities. Or keeping it at fourteen hundred dollars to get everyone something in hand that many households throw out. Just food for thought, and maybe not to do it this year, but in a future year, understood to this point?
Yep.
Okay, office supplies basically just kept it flat. Um what this office supplies does tend to primarily cover is. The pool procurement of paper for the second floor, even though other boards and committees should be buying their own paper, the select board office. Um shoulders the paper that goes out in the copier area in the hallway, which is now on camera. And there's not going to be a copier in the um room two-two-six anymore. Everyone's being directed to use the one in the hallway, but also with COVID, you think that's paper use might be, it's hard to really go to handle, and it might be. Used less, um so we're leveling that. Copy jobs is quite large, again, because of the need to. need to now copy not just a special town meeting warrant, um, but an annual town meeting warrant with the finance committee report. So um in this very small font.
You don't quite get that, Mary, because we did a bound book mailed to the entire town with a hundred pages for five thousand dollars. So you're now saying now an eight-page booklet mailed out is also five thousand five. So its color bound is five thousand and
No, this would be two different mailings. This is taking into account the unknown of what fiscal year twenty four would look like. Do we also have a special town meeting warrant in the fall? And in the spring, still the mailing of an annual town meeting warrant with the FinCom report. So this is two different mailings.
I I would not necessarily budget for two mailings. I think that's what reserves are for things that we don't anticipate.
Could be.
I don't want to bet that like, I don't want to do what might happen in every line.
Understood.
And then we have all this extra overage that is free cash and taxes we don't need.
My understanding is Margaret was pretty firm against having STM's unless they were necessary. I understand that this year we are asking for one po- possibly. Um, I don't know what that is, but um if you want to bring that down and and treat it as a reserve fund transfer, that's an area that I can highlight. Do you want to throw a number out there? Do you want it down to three?
Yeah, why don't we put it at three? I still the the whole reason of pulling the 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 report, the fiscal report and the warrant out of the annual report is eventually save money. And for some reason, we are now still printing a thirty five hundred dollar report and spending the exact same amount of money to mail out just the eight-page paper that we may use to build up a hundred-page document.
I understand. I understand. We were kind of shocked last year that going back to, well, there's a couple of things about the annual town report, too, which is just a separate budget, but there might be an ability to have some savings there if we stop having the bound book that they call perfect bound, which is like kind of stitched along the side. We might want to go down.
Is that I don't get why a hundred-pound page colored bound document costs the same as an eight-page black and white document when it comes to copying and printing. I just, they it doesn't make sense to me. And I it it doesn't make logical sense to me why those are the same costs. Because it costs thirty five hundred dollars to to print that very nice glossy, I'm very proud that we have done report. Why is it also sort of three thirty five hundred dollars to print and mail it an eight-page paper dot eight-page black and white budget and report?
Um. Okay, what are we talking about postage or are you talking about the copy job?
The combination. So two years ago, it cost five thousand dollars to take a hundred-page document that is color and bound and mail it to every house in the household in the town. And we're now saying that in this budget, between printing and postage, we're spending almost that same amount to do it like what is at most an eight-page black and white document. And I just, it doesn't make mental sense to me that something super complicated and heavy is exactly the same as something very light and small.
The copy job price is not the same as what it used to be. Um, and also the cost of the book itself is not what it used to be. There increased the price of the book quite heavily. I can pull that up if you'd like.
Yeah, I I I we can look into it a little bit more, Scott. I see what you're saying.
Yep.
Um, I think the there is a separate budget for the town report that's undermined, that has thirty five hundred in it. But Mary, correct me if I'm wrong. I didn't think that included the postage.
It does not. It did include posters, thirty five hundred does not.
Okay.
Right.
So but now does the twenty three hundred for, or I'm sorry, the thirty one hundred for the warrant and the FinCom report, does that include postage?
This right here.
Postage would be aligned would be where it's on line twenty eight where it says C three.
Okay, I was just wondering if that was the difference, if that perhaps got included in one place, but not in the other.
Scott, we had in the selectman's budget, three thousand dollars more three fiscal years ago that got cut during COVID in an attempt to be more frugal. Um, but that was at a time when we didn't have these mailings. I I I can I can dive into it more closely if you'd like more information about this.
So put like a put a thirty five hundred just to make a little hobby and we'll do a reserve on transfer and end up having a special time because I would also just go back to the intent was the report about what the town has done in the past year goes out in January where the annual warrant can go out sort of in in April. Um, and that doesn't seem to ever happen either, so. Um, but let's move on to the budget. We can have that fight again later on.
Yep, um, do you want to go into the next block here?
Yeah, so so travel.
Yep, zeroed out.
So we're not reimbursing for mileage for well, we never did for select board, but oh, because your mileage goes under your budget as opposed to
Well, my mileage would go under this budget, so maybe we should put some of it back, but it's not a lot because I'm not I don't think we anticipate us going anywhere.
Right.
Do you want to put fifty back? That is, I do charge to go to the post office and yada yada.
Yeah, yeah, so so put like a hundred into that line.
And Mary, to kind of offset that, I know it's not much, but I think rather than going up two and a half percent um on the hearings and notices and the um office supplies, we could probably keep those level. Um, and that offsets a little bit the um
Yep.
Hundred bucks. Not exactly. I was just looking at those and I went, well, if our overall budget is above two and a half, then those line items that are sort of questionable whether the costs go up, we should probably just keep it level.
Okay. Um, and then the dues for the MA.
No, the the dues make sense. You talked about that sort of last week, too.
Yep.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that. Kristen says it's based on um TA salary. So this has been, I think they caught up to us last year and we didn't have enough last year. So we don't have enough this year, so we would have enough for next year, whatever. It comes out of the soup at the, you know, it's all in there, but so then that brought that that what was that nine before? Now it's six point eight? And if you see here my notes that there was an expense RFT and a consulting RFT.
And I don't knock on wood, don't anticipate having to have a consulting RFT unless we have a sudden departure um of an executive.
The only reason why I note these things, Scott, is because there's no way for me to say it above and beyond
Right. Right.
Also, please update the budget to select board, not not selectmen. Which is out in the current budget. Does that work?
We're we're going to spend decades fixing select board, select board. We're going to find years from now, we're going to find it somewhere and go, oh, yeah, that one got by us. Um, Gary Peg, I've done a lot of talking. Do you have questions or comments on the?
No, I'm fine. I mean, uh, yeah, I mean, uh unfortunately, as we're going to find out with all the other budgets that come in, that there's going to be prices that we didn't anticipate that are going out of control. You know, everything is well explained as to why when somebody sees, what do you mean? It's a hundred and twenty percent increase. Well, um, so no, I'm I'm good.
It's sometimes deceiving because if you go like from fifty to sixty, that is a big increase and you go from you know, two hundred thousand to two hundred and ten thousand, that looks like a tiny increase and
Correct.
Good is, and then are there other budgets the select board needs to be working on? Because I thought it was like streetlights and
Those those don't generally go in front of you.
So street, streetlights, I believe the accountant manages that budget. And then there are those other budgets that fall under my purview. So I did upload those so you could see them in case you had any questions on those.
Right. And and some of those, like the workers' comp insurance and and other stuff are just, it's the bill that comes in. Like, we can like it or not like it, there's there's sometimes not much we can do about those things.
Well, and there is one thing I put in the folder loose that says WRRS budget information. This um is going to be a challenge. Worcester Regional.
My favorite one to rail against.
Yeah, so unfortunately, um Worcester Regional Retirement Assessment for Berlin. And oops, I put it in here. It's sideways, so that's not really helpful to read.
Trying to figure out a way to rotate.
I know, it wasn't letting me rotate it either. Um, but basically it was a difference of so let's see, FY twenty three was six hundred and almost six hundred and seventeen thousand and FY twenty four is six hundred and seventy six thousand dollars. That is a significant increase of basically sixty thousand dollars almost. That is a fixed cost. That is something that we have to work into the budget. That is going to obviously eat up um a substantial amount of any funding we had for um supplemental funding.
And if you look back, it has done that type of increase e- every year for a decade.
Yeah, well, then maybe it's not as bad and I've got to dive into that more. I mean, not as bad in terms of you know, the jump every year. It 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 just all depends on how it shakes out. But the other budget that um is going to need to increase is the legal budget. And I don't know if any of you had a chance to look at that. I'm recommending increasing it from fifty thousand to seventy five thousand dollars. Um, we are burn rate on legal um given, and it's legal, so I don't want to specify the issues, but you all know what the issues are. There are a wide variety of issues. And unfortunately, these things happen in the town. There's not a whole lot we can do. Um, they help us with everything from HR to negotiations to, you know, land use matters to what have you. Um, it's it runs the gamut. Um, so that's kind of my recommendation on legal because I can tell you it is December and the legal budget is almost completely exhausted. We have to do a reserve fund transfer, which I'm going to be working with June on for an upcoming FinCom meeting.
There are also other budgets that were put together for consideration, if not this year and perhaps some point in the future. Supplemental requests through the select board office.
Yep.
The first one is that um as the outgoing town administrator suggested, not necessarily Kristen per se, but possibly Kristen um thought that the um administrative assistant and um the CPA administrator go and get um procurement trained. I had started that through the state, but I it's too old now to bootstrap that on and continue using two thousand and seventeen credentials. I took the first of what's now a three-course curriculum. Um, passed it in two thousand and seventeen, but it's older than a couple of years old, so it's stale now. So there is a supplemental budget for two of three courses, presuming that they could both be um scheduled in the coming year. Um, but I as I asked Kristen and I drafted and not really with Kristen's, um, you know, Kristen hasn't had a lot of time to work with me on this to get a good handle on this, but in my estimation, I think Kristen would agree that I we spend so much time on input, it would be hard to do something like that kind of input assistance on projects without there being another human in this office. So if it's not this year, understand, I understand. And um not not wed to the idea either, just putting it out there that we're the only office on the second floor that doesn't have two people deep. I mean, yes, I know you have a town administrator, but to support the board and support and do welcome wagon at the end of the hallway for every single person who walks down the hallway. It doesn't leave a lot of time for it. So Margaret's recommendation was that I get that certification. I think that's kind of dependent on who sits in the seat. I think I'm capable of it. And so I kind of showed you that I have done one of the three before. So put that aside. I I don't know what your feeling is about that. That that was also married to the idea of a part-time floating clerk that wouldn't just be the select board office. It could it could help other needs um on the second floor. And then the last one uh was a Kristen idea I had not heard of before, but it's called SLDP through the UMass Collins Center and it helps. Um, I've been a top it uh top of grade for, this is my fourth consecutive year, so I have coal, but no steps. And that is what it is, but um with the interest of going further into a a career in municipal administration, I have already completed uh three of five classes for the MMA Masters of Public Administration program. So I think I've shown my interest in developing further in this, and this is six mornings of a program. So um that helps develop your HR and um management abilities. Though truly, I don't manage anybody. So you can say I don't of record manage anybody except for every time there's boarding committee turnover or anybody who needs help. Um, but all, I guess, all just a flow, a first float by and and not not seriously hardcore for this year in any stretch of the imagination. And that's it.
And just to piggyback on what you said, Mary, those courses were a couple of things we talked about when we did um evaluations or performance appraisals, as you call them here, you know, what are some goals you have? What would you need to do to get to those goals? I can tell you the super, the SLDP is a course I actually took when I was assistant to the town administrator. And I found it very helpful in my growth. So that's where that idea came from. And I could certainly use help with procurement. I'll tell you that.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. That Mar- Margaret had, I think, a decent idea there that we should continue to to evaluate and see what we can pull off.
Yep. So all those supplemental requests will be put together. Um, we can talk about them, figure out you know, what we can fund, what we can't fund, rate and rank them. We'll be getting those um and I'll put together a draft budget. And um well, you can go from there unless you all have any more changes to the select board budget.
Then just for the sake of argument, using round math that I can do on the top of my head. Um, six hundred and seventy six thousand dollars worth of retirement equals about the total amount net that we put into highway and transfer station combined.
Yep. It is highly significant. I I'm not going to lie and that, you know, is part of your intergovernmental fixed cost. It comes off the top, but it's a it's not an easy thing to swallow. And I nearly had a heart attack when I saw the increase. Um, not that it makes me feel better that it's happened in previous years because it doesn't, but apparently that's the trend. And I did speak with Dennis a little bit about it and um he said that there were potentially some bad investments that were made and we're paying for it through like twenty thirty.
But as I also understand it is that as a government retirement fund, there are limits to what they can invest in to actually make risk less. And that means in the bull market of the last like, you know, three or four years where our personal retirees might have done well, they're not allowed to invest in some of those things who did not see that big increase. Um, they have other things out there that have not been well, but we we have, I've always wanted to have more. We never found the time to find more conversations about like, what are the things that contribute to this? Because I think we might accidentally be doing things that make that number go up. You know, we give raises to people right before they leave, uh, which means that, you know, when their retirement is, what are their highest last three salaries or something like that, highest three paid years? And so and and or and are hiring people where we end up fitting the bill where the other towns, they spent a lot of the time working on don't. Um, but I'd love at some point and maybe I can find a way to educate on my own. I don't think it's a select board meeting stuff, but uh uh, and figure out how we might have a way to wait and make that number not continue to go up in large number every year.
Christian, question for you on the procurement um, is there any way to use ARPA funding? Because again, you know, I'm not a big fan of of using ARPA here near and everywhere, but if that ARPA funding um you know, especially in lieu of maybe, you know, FinCon being able to come back and say, here's your hundred and twenty thousand dollars back you know, for the uh ambulance overage because we can take, we can take the receipts. Is it possible to shift to Mary and uh the other CPA person?
I don't know. I can look into it. Mary might know.
There, well, there is a continuing education requirement. So beyond the fact that there's three courses to get that designation, there is ongoing um certification or continuing education requirements. It might not have to be funded to that same extent in the future, but there is still it would be an ongoing expense baked into it.
Well, maybe we can get by in the first year, you know, within or the or because we have what until twenty twenty four or twenty twenty six?
Twenty twenty four to allocate twenty twenty six to spend.
So June says yes.
Hey, June, welcome back.
Um, but uh, you know, it's one of those things where like, like Mary mentioned, there is the ongoing continuing expense. What it is is in after you get certified, it's good for three years. And in those three years, you have to take two classes. However, those classes are typically one-day classes and they're much cheaper. Um, but now they've added a recertification class, which is a couple hundred bucks that you have to go through to get your recert after three years. So that I've accounted for in the town administrator budget because I have to maintain. So that I've accounted for in the town administrator budget because I have to maintain that because one of us has to, so.
Okay, well, I mean, if we can look at it, then maybe that's a shift of something out of budget money into pot of money we already have.
Okay. There.
Um, is anything more we need to do on the budget tonight? Should, should we take, are we okay to just vote on some of those numbers?
Yeah, I mean, if you know, I have nothing, uh, there wasn't anything that come that came out that I was like, oh, my God, you know, I need more information on it, so I'm.
Yeah, so I think I I would move that we approve a select board budget uh, of it, the total, I still have this spreadsheet in front of me, so totals eighty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Hmm.
Um, uh, which is the budget Mary presented with changes that she's highlighted in orange during the presentation.
Uh, seconded.
Uh, Hawkins eye.
Stone eye.
Good. She's, yep, as as Mary's now showing now, yes.
Thank you, Mary.
Um, uh, as I said earlier, I think we'll push off till next week, discussion of uh, in-person hybrid sort of meeting schedule stuff. Uh, so that Chris can partake. And then under uh, new business, uh, I just wanted to uh, start us as a, as our, get our brains thinking that January nineteenth at six hundred PM will be the next uh, coffee talk uh, that is uh, scheduled. Um, I think we have a couple of uh, things already on the agenda. We're hoping for is potentially a welcoming, introducing a new uh, fire chief. Um, and and uh uh, some department head in the wallet, you know, potentially even a new uh, tax collector treasurer.
Yep.
Yeah, one of the other items, so the the advantage of uh chatting with uh Meg Kilcoyne, our rep and Robin Kennedy, our new Senate-elect uh, state senator was that, you know, I had their undivided attention and said, uh, hey, you want to come to coffee talk? And both of them said, yes.
Yep.
So you know, maybe we can pencil them in. Maybe we can also talk about something. Uh, you know, if there's any legislative updates, things that are coming up that Meg and Robin can share with us that Berlin can take advantage of, get in on. So um, you know, I don't know how quickly their calendars fill up. So if we want to whiz them out a date as a, you know, save the date, then that would be good.
Are we definitely set for the nineteenth? Is that a firm?
I think that looks like a good date because we wouldn't have met that Monday anyway, because the MLK holiday, so we don't lose a select board meeting by having it then.
Yeah, okay. Um, so Mary, if you could get out some invites, that would be great.
Mary, I don't have Robin's address yet. Um Meg, Meg is Meg, Megs from last year, obviously still work, so I don't know if we need to.
Hold it. I don't have contact information for Senator-elect Kennedy, but if you could find it or
Okay.
I don't, they haven't reached out. Their their um incoming administration has not yet reached out to us.
Well, that was also another bug in both their ears to say, so have you met with the new TA yet? And both of them went, no.
I have reached out to Rep Kilcoyne's office and I will tell you, I've spoken to her chief of staff uh, a few times. So there has been communication back and forth.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And then maybe Victoria. As an introduction as to what she's doing to the survey, if it's going to go out in.
Especially because she also talked about uh, that uh teen uh stress management, which would be the following week. And so it's a chance to highlight that again.
Yeah, January twenty-fifth is that date. Okay, so maybe we can pencil in Victoria.
Okay. See, even in five minutes, we've more than filled the meeting and I'm sure we'll come up with fifteen other great ideas for the meeting, you know, and then.
Pretty much.
Well, there's always ARPA, 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 who wants an ARPA? You know, as to what's going on and what's been in the pipeline.
Okay.
Uh, Peg, uh, board questions, comments, layers on updates?
Just uh, so Kristen, a question for you, dear God, it's just going to like not roll out of my mouth. So um Christie Tershen uh, from Berlin School Committee, she sent out an agenda and as I troll them, as I often do. There was an item on there for cell tower update. Nothing more, nothing less, except cell tower update. The meeting is tomorrow at ten AM. Uh, budget um, uh, for its uh, facilities. So you know, I can reach out back to her because I'm curious, did I'm just going to call him cell tower guy because I can't remember his name. Did he ever get anything back to us that we had asked for last week?
No.
Okay. So I can reach out to Christie after the meeting tomorrow and just see if there's any information that she can share. I have no idea what it means. I'll be honestly, the agenda just said cell tower update.
That's under new business.
Yeah, so I'm thinking if Boylston's doing something. Maybe we piggyback on, I don't know.
Okay.
All right. Uh. And then as Kristen, as you and I talked about earlier, you know, the Neshoba Valley Chamber of Commerce that we uh potentially looked out, looked at last week or discussed last week. Uh, it's too expensive and not worth the bang for the buck. So I'll just keep stealing stuff out of local newspapers and see if there's any way that we can, hey, that's the best flattery. Um, you know, see if there's anything that we can partner on the cuff or on the fly with upcoming towns and then maybe with Meg and Robin, they'll be able to tell us what's going on as well. So because I know that they generally have some legislative initiatives. I don't know what they are, but uh but no, that's, that's all I had. I had no meetings um, last week, so I'm good.
Uh, I'm thinking I'm pretty good. I got some of my stuff out under the TA report. So does that mean we're done for tonight?
Yeah, it does.
Uh, do you want to do a, because there is no executive session. So Peg, do you want to do a motion to adjourn?
No, absolutely. I want to stay here till ten o'clock tonight. Uh, no, I uh, make a motion to uh close our select board meeting and get Kristen home on time.
Yes, I will second uh Hawkins eye.
Stone eye.